Yes, we'll go ahead then, because everybody's here. We can go ahead for six o'clock. So we'll go ahead and go to the work session. And of course, I guess the first thing we looked at. Amendments to the city code pertaining to the signs public right-of-way. And I thought, did you go the same way or obey that?
I'll turn it over to Dan, and I don't know how much he wants to say or how little.
You've seen it before.
What we've seen, basically, in here.
I have a presentation that I'd like to do just now, just to introduce the changes for the benefit of the audience. And it also has some examples in there that might be helpful.
Okay, that'd be wonderful.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So tonight's topic will be amending the city ordinance regarding the topic of signs in the public right-of-way, which, for the benefit of the audience and anyone who is not familiar, the public right-of-way is the area alongside public roads typically between five to seven feet off the curb where we put sidewalks, utility poles, and stuff. So our current sign regulations are split between a couple different sections of the city code, but most of which is in either Chapter Six, which is the advertising chapter, or Appendix D, which is the sign ordinance. Both of these sections contain conflicting and sometimes contradictory language, as well as language that we don't really enforce or that we haven't enforced in many years. Our current practice is usually to follow Appendix D and ignore or supersede most of Chapter Six, which has brought us into conflict when we've brought up regulations from Chapter Six and then trying to interpret what do we actually enforce. In addition, we have three separate sign permits, some of which seem to say certain things that aren't there, and it's very confusing and difficult to try and enforce these sometimes. And finally, one of those sign permits is for political signs, which we have found out in recent years, the regulation of content and the definition of certain signs based on what they say, such as political signs, which say political things, is currently considered by the Supreme Court in this Reed B. Gilbert case to be unconstitutional unless we have a really good reason. So if we're writing new regulations, we want to make sure that what we're proposing is content neutral, so which is what we're going to try to do tonight. So a number of years ago, when I was first hired, we tried to amend the sign ordinance by basically ditching Chapter Six and putting everything in Appendix D. That did not go very well. So we've gone with a less dramatic change. So tonight, we'd like to propose that we would keep both of these sections and simply update and rewrite the language of each. So we will have Chapter Six, which governs only signs in the public right-of-way alongside the road, and Appendix D will govern all other signs, which are all the other signs that are on private property. In addition, we would permit only temporary signs in the right-of-way. This is what the language we were proposing would do, advertising specific events, and that would include political signs in that definition. And therefore, it would allow us to simplify our permitting, so we would also probably only have one sign permit for your temporary roadside signs and another sign permit for everything else. So what we're proposing tonight is mostly the minimum amount of changes that we'd like to make to get Chapter Six concurrent with basically what current city policy is, as well as to amend the language to be in line with what the Council and Planning Commission have suggested in past work sessions where this topic has come up. Also, we would like to avoid regulating content, so we're going to try and keep everything content neutral for this. But tonight, we are only talking about Chapter Six. Appendix D will have to be rewritten at a later date, maybe sometime this year. We're not sure. Okay, with that being said, we'll get into the changes. So the text, the full text of the changes is in your packets. You will notice that begins with a whole bunch of lined-out text. That is because our first big change is we are proposing to delete Article Two pertaining to miscellaneous advertising and notices. This whole section contains a bunch of redundant regulation for political signs and permitting that we feel is already covered in existing sections of Chapter Six and Appendix D. Therefore, we propose we would just delete this section and revise the numbering of subsequent sections accordingly. So moving on to the actual sign regulations, we would amend, starting Section 113, state this is signs not requiring permits, I believe, that would state that official traffic control signs, along with city signposts, may be erected in the right-of-way by the governing body without a permit. This is simply amending the existing language to allow the city to install its own signposts. Things like the city sign out on Victory Boulevard. We want to make sure that we are able to install a sign, especially since City Council approved a nice new electronic sign, so we want to make sure that that is legal and we could put that there. Next section is getting into the actual regulations of the sign. We're changing a little bit of the language to make sure that it's clear that signs related to specific events being conducted on a specific property for a limited time, including an election or a public vote on an issue, shall be permitted to be placed, provided the following conditions are met. So this is just to clarify, this section does apply to political signs. So the actual content, we're amending three of the conditions of that section. Condition three, this is going to take a little bit of explaining. We've come up with this as somewhat of a creative solution. Signs greater than four square feet or taller than three feet above grade must be set back a minimum of 20 feet from the curb or edge of pavement. Now, this is here because we had a very difficult time trying to determine what would be an appropriate maximum size for your roadside sign. And we received a number of different answers from Council, from Planning Commission, and trying to come up with a number on ourselves. It was very difficult. So we had the idea to propose this language. So it takes the existing four-square-feet limitation, but adds this, that if your sign is larger than that, it has to be set back 20 feet from the curb. Now, we've chosen this number based on the advice of the city engineer. They've considered this as the minimum for traffic safety. This is also the setback that the new city electronic sign on Victory Boulevard will have to face. But we've chosen this number also because the only right-of-way in the city currently wide enough to accommodate this setback is Victory Boulevard. So functionally, this will mean that any sign larger than four square feet that wants to be in a public right-of-way will have to go on Victory Boulevard and will be set back 20 feet. And as a visual aid, I have a sign that we've, if you can hold that up while. That sign is about a little less than four square feet, about 3.8 square feet. So that is the size limit that we are providing. So anything larger than that will have to be 20 feet from the curb. And this is the compromise that we've come up with, because we didn't think it was prudent to have a blanket size limit such that, you know, you don't want to see 20-foot, 20-square-foot signs like on the curb on With Creek Road. That would be a traffic hazard. It wouldn't fit. So this is the compromise we've come up with.
You hit on it, Dan, and just then, but the point I was trying to make is you noticed all these political signs. If we didn't really have a sign limit, or if we put a sign limit of, say, 12 square feet or 16, there's no way we can really preclude one candidate from advertising, you know, the same way that another one would, just to take political signs. We all remember what they look like. So they could technically be, you know, if we allowed bigger signs, you would have a bunch of signs in the right-of-way, right on the right. And that would be a traffic hazard, as Dan was pointing out.
So the next condition, signs shall be displayed 30 days prior to the announced event, and any sign must be removed within seven days following the event. This is our current practice for temporary signs. We've never really done 48 hours. 30 days is a limit that's in Appendix D, and we like to apply that to this section. Number five, signs advertising a garage or yard sale shall be permitted, only pre-formatted yard sale signs. You get a maximum of two such signs. This is also a current practice that have been in place for many years, but it was never put in the code, so we are putting it in the code. And as Wally just held up, that is an example of the sign that you would get. It's a plain eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper.
Actually, there's a yard sale permit for...
Well, state signs, Dan, like open house signs for realtors and that type of thing. Oftentimes, you'll see them on the side of the road pointing with an arrow on the street. How does that affect them?
We usually consider those to be off-site advertising, and those are usually not permitted. The code does allow you to put real estate signs up without a permit, but that's something that's covered in Appendix D.
Okay.
So we usually don't allow, we don't permit signs that are directly in the right-of-way that are for real estate, usually, not to my knowledge that we have. So as an example, this is an example of what is 20 feet from the curb. So this is a frame of a sign that was erected during the holidays. We went out and measured this distance, and this is about 20 feet. And as you can see, this is on Victory. City Hall is back here, and this is the ditch. So this is the right-of-way that is wide enough to accommodate this limit, and that is the distance that we are proposing for these larger signs. All right, so the next section is the prohibition at intersections, and no eventual sign be permitted in a public right-of-way within 200 feet of the following street intersections. Now, the existing language does not specify the distance from which this is prohibited. Our zoning administrator came up with 100 feet as a way to enforce this. We've increased this to 200 feet, but that is a topic of discussion that we'd like to bring up with you. Do you think 200 feet is an appropriate distance for this prohibition? Should it be less? Should it be more?
And just to be clear, we've got 200 feet from the last work session. So it can be less.
So the existing code already specifies for intersections. We're also adding the intersection of Victory Boulevard and City Hall Avenue, as well as the intersection of Pacoson Avenue and Municipal Drive going into the Municipal Park. We've also added, signs within the public right-of-way are also prohibited within 200 feet of official city signs near the city limits. So those welcome-to-Pacoson signs, nothing would be permitted within 200 feet of those two signs. So in order to help visualize, we went out and we stuck a sign in the ground and took some pictures. So this is an example of a sign that is 100 feet from the intersection of Victory Boulevard, City Hall, With Creek Road in Little Florida. So this is, the left picture is looking towards Little Florida Road, and the right picture is from the traffic signal looking down Victory. As you can see, this is our sign, and the sign is right there. It's kind of difficult to see, but it would be right about there, right at the beginning of that kind of curve off into the turn lane.
And that's 100 feet, you said?
That's 100 feet. This is 200 feet. This is well into the turn lane. The sign is right about there. This is past these big green streetlights that are in front of Wells Fargo and the dentist's office. That is 200 feet. Moving out even further, this is 300 feet. And you can see the sign, you can't really see, but it's way back right here. And as you can see, this is well into the turn lane to the shopping center. And just as an example, this is past 400 feet. 400 feet from that intersection would actually be in the middle of this turnoff, so this is about 420, 425 feet. And as you can see, it's well away from the intersection, as well as the opposite intersection coming into McDonald's right there. So just to give you a visualization of the distances we're talking about.
I'm still a little bit confused, because I'm... I'm reading this, and it says, "No sign, unauthorized sign, no sign other than those permitted under the terms of this article." ...be placed, erected, or displayed with any public right-of-way for the purpose as a structure, object, or placard using graphics or symbols. And again, I go back to, you know, I'm looking at this little sign because a lot of the realtor signs do have, you know, they're on these little metal stakes, and they are oftentimes put there, but that would preclude them here? Or the way I read this, it would preclude that from being used here as well? And so even though you're saying they're not permitted signs, to me, this tells me I can't do that here.
Yes.
Is that a correct statement? So no sign of any kind?
Yes, other than, you know, traffic control signs and official city signposts at these So moving on to permitting procedures, a non-refundable fee of $5 for each form. This is our current practice for political signs, so we're simply applying it here. We don't charge $10. Next section, accepting garage and yard sale signs. All right-of-way permits shall be issued with a $50 deposit guaranteeing compliance. This sum shall be returned within one month of the termination of the event being advertised. Again, the $50 deposit is our current practice for political signs, and so we would apply it to all signs in the right-of-way, excepting garage and yard sale signs, because that seems And the one-month limit is simply a reflection of the fact that it takes about a month for our finance department to process refunds for these kinds of deposits. All right, removal of unpermitted signs, so signs which violate the terms of this article shall be removed and disposed of by the city. The previous language states that we would keep the signs and return them, or call people and try to identify them. We felt that this was a little bit difficult to enforce, and we'd have to track down every single person who puts a sign at these intersections, even if they, you know, live 10 states away and call them and hold their signs indefinitely if they never pick them up. So we've removed that language and simply stated that we would dispose of these roadside signs. The final section, which is very odd, which has provisions for providing written notice to the owners of signs and for a sign hearing run through the city manager's office if anyone feels that their signs were taken down in error. We've never used this section, as far as I can tell, since the code was written in the 80s. The city manager was very, you know, shocked to discover that this actually was in the code, and so we've decided to simply renew it, remove it, because we just don't have any need for it that we can see. All right, so that is the summary of the changes. So I'll open it up to discussion of the Planning Commission. Keep this in mind, and we suggest you keep this in mind. For one, is this language sufficient to properly regulate signs in the public right-of-way? Should it be more or less? Is that 200 feet an appropriate distance from intersections to prohibit these signs? And are there any additional regulations for right-of-way signs that you would propose?
Dan, well, I'll go ahead and start if that's okay. And knowing that we do need to keep this content neutral, I think one of my concerns is that there's no limit on a quantity or size in the current proposal. So even though they might have to be away from the intersection, you can still have them spaced every two feet. Also, another concern of mine is that I think that Pacoson has some really great civic organizations and community organizations, and I really hate to make it harder to advertise the fish fries and the boating and fishing flea market and things like that. And I know they don't want these civic organizations, they're not looking for a quantity of signs. They just want a couple nice signs where people can see. And they're typically, I think, larger than the four-square-feet. So that's, those are my two concerns, is just having some sort of regulation about the spacing or the quantity along the public right-of-way. I think that was more of an eyesore for people than the location close to an intersection.
I would have to agree with Commissioner Eminon on that. And if you went down With Creek, during the time of the Pacoson Seafood Festival, you couldn't see anything but signs. They were literally 10 or 15 feet apart, and that, that makes no sense. It provides no benefit to anybody that I can think of, except the sign maker. And I really think there needs to be a restriction. My suggestion would be a restriction on the distance between like signs. Let's just say that if they're going to put up, you know, a restriction between copies of that sign and a distance restriction between any signs, like in the political thing. I think that makes the street look a whole lot neater. I understand the comment about the civic organizations, they can still use Victory Boulevard, which where 90% of the people come in and have big signs up beside it. I don't know how to answer that question. I don't know how to answer that one. But I think if you make exceptions, then, you know, that's a slippery slope. Presume the exception becomes a rule. That's just my own particular personal opinion. I would really like to see some limitation on not number signs, but how close to proximity, congestion, whatever you want to call it.
Comment, too, is directional signs. If you have to put a directional sign 200 feet from the intersection, then to me, that is creating some sort of a hazard, because I'm looking for that sign, and I'm trying to figure out where in the dickens am I supposed to turn? It's 200 feet from the intersection, and there's, and I'm thinking about open houses that realtors do, and they stick an open house sign with a directional arrow, and I'm trying to get to that open house sign, and I see it 200 feet. Do I turn into McDonald's? Am I turning here? Or do I go up to the intersection? So I think there should be some provision for those one-day signs, like real estate signs, directional signs. I think there should be some provision to not restrict that.
Let me ask you this. Are they permitted in New York County? I don't see them. Are they permitted in Newport News?
As far as I know, they're...
I don't believe that's true.
If you're going to an open house, your directional signs pointing where to go?
Yeah, but I'm talking about public property. Public right-of-way.
Well, I'm thinking, as an example, I live down off Emus Road. I mean, often, there is a directional sign there, open house, with a directional arrow, and it's within the public right-of-way of Emus Road and Yorktown Road.
Yes, it is.
And if you don't have a sign there, if you can't, if you can't put a sign there at that corner, how in the world do you get people to turn down that road? I don't agree with that. I think that there should be a provision for at least a one-day sign for that type of activity.
We thought that the number of signs and the distance would come up, considering the planes that we heard last year. The reason we didn't put that in the ordinance was because we could not come up with a way to reasonably enforce that. For example, there's nothing, if we put a limit on the number of signs you could get per permit, there would be nothing preventing 10 people from one campaign from filing for signs and then getting all these, the same number of signs, just with more people involved and more permits. As for enforcing the distance between signs, that would mean we'd have to go out and measure the distance between every sign, and we don't...
Not only that, but depending on how many signs you got, like the Mugler signs that were out there last time. You can't really deny one candidate the ability to advertise if, and by having distances, well, I mean, I guess you could separate them from each other, but, I mean, that becomes more of a traffic hazard. You know, as far as civic signs, I mean, we can't regulate content, so that's why we came up with the sort of open-ended sign size, if it was 20 feet out of the right-of-way. Question on that, for sure. Now, the distance, you know, Dan and I thought had some really good examples of how far you'd be back on distance. I think that's a big one that you need to think about, is how far back out of the right-of-ways is appropriate. I mean, you saw what 200, 300, 400, and 100 looks like. You know, I'm thinking about your question about the real estate signs, and...
And they're up for a day, for two hours, or three hours, or whatever, a directional sign, and they're pulling them out of the ground and going until the next open house. But I think that would unduly restrict that type of activity.
Well, you certainly wouldn't be able to do a directional right, directional sign on personal property, because it'd be an off-premise sign. But is it really an off-premise sign in the right-of-way? Maybe it is, I don't know. I don't know how many we've issued.
Well, I didn't hear what you said.
Is it an off-premise sign if you put it in the right-of-way?
I guess it wouldn't matter.
Because the right-of-way is really all city property.
No, we wouldn't define or, we don't have any permissions on that, so that would be...
The 200 feet only applies to these major intersections, so in terms of, you know, the alternative, you know, the smaller side streets, this 200 feet would not apply to that.
Well, it would, if I'm coming down With Creek Road, and I want to turn right on Little Florida, and I've got a directional sign, and I've got to put it back at Alpha Street to be 200 feet away from the intersection, and the people are looking for this property, how, do I turn on Alpha Street? What, I mean, to me, that's just, I think that's ludicrous. I think that is too restrictive. I think that there should be a provision for a short-term, I mean, you're talking about less than 24 hours. You're probably talking about a five-hour window at the most, that they can't put a directional, I think a directional sign should be allowed closer than 200 feet. Yeah.
Wedding reception.
Right, exactly. Birthday parties, people put up a little sign for a birthday party, turn here. I mean, you're precluding all of that, and I think there should be a provision for a, maybe a timeframe on it, that it's less than 24 hours or something, or of that nature.
Well, there again, we're doing a subset of regulations for a type of sign, and that's what we kind of want to stay away from, is, but I think the way we get there is that I think the real estate sign could be a sign if it's less than four square feet, that could be allowed in the right-of-way, unless I'm just...
I was just...
Seems like, but, but the 200-foot distance is what really seemed to have the problem with more than anything else. I mean, it's...
Well, I have a problem with it even being, being able to put it within the right-of-way. The way that I read this, if I'm reading this incorrectly, that it would be, it would be against the sign ordinance to place it in a public right-of-way of any kind.
And what section are you looking at there?
I'm looking here, it says, "Other than those from 6112 unauthorized signs."
Okay, okay.
A sign shall be defined as any structure using graphics, symbols, and/or written copy which is designated for the purpose of advertising or identifying an event, establishment, product, goods, or services. So if I'm having a big 50th wedding anniversary for my parents, and I want to put a directional sign on the corner, right up here at the corner, to turn right onto Little Florida Road, the way I read this, I would not be able to do that, and I just don't think that...
Well, you wouldn't be able to put it on the corner because of the distance regulations, but I don't see anything in here that says you can't have a temporary sign. I mean, if it's a temporary sign, I mean, I...
There's no sign other than those permitted under this article, so if you tell me where, maybe I'm not reading...
Well, signs requiring permits, 6-114.
Yeah.
Subject to the prohibitions is 6-115, talks about the distances. Signs related to specific events being conducted on a specific property for a limited time...
Where are you reading at?
I'm at 6-114, signs requiring permits. All signs are going to require a permit, with the exception of the regulatory signs and the right-of-way signs, or the city signposts. But for the others, 6-114, signs requiring permits.
I know, but what specific number are you...
First paragraph, first of all. Subject to the prohibitions...
Signs to a specific events being conducted on a specific property for a limited-time event.
Right.
That's saying this, including an election or public...
Shall be permitted to be posted.
Shall be permitted. So I mean, you're telling me it's got to be permitted, right?
Well, you need a permit for it, yes.
To put an open house sign out for two hours, three...
For any sign, yes.
I don't agree with that. I'm sorry.
Well, that's the reason, okay.
I think that is too restrictive.
Okay.
This might not be a sufficient or appropriate response, but Pacoson is complaint generated when it comes to most enforcement stuff, as in, we don't have staff who are paid to ride around the city and pick up illegal signs. At most, what we've done in recent years is, at the request of the city manager, I've gone out on a weekly basis and picked up signs that are within 100 feet of these four intersections. That is the upper limit of enforcement. I know in the past, public works, people have done the same thing, is just pick up signs that have been out. The purpose of this is to regulate people who come in with 10, 20, 30 signs, and they're suddenly all down the major thoroughfares. It's not really to catch people who put one or two signs out, or, you know, a birthday party, or a state sale, or something like that.
But the way this reads, they would be in violation.
It is, and...
And I don't, I think it needs to be reworded, because I understand the purpose and what we're trying to do here, but in doing that, I think you're severely restricting... restricting people who just want to have an event directional sign and then they would be in violation. And I don't think you should be recommending something that's going to create that type of violation, trying to capture everything else that's going on in here.
The other side of that is we're requiring permits for yard sales, which are a few hour events, the same as an open house. So under that mindset, we wouldn't have any kind of regulations.
The permit for yard sales has always been a money, it's been a fund, funding function, not necessarily
That's the same as selling a house. That's a funding function. You're selling a house.
Well, I don't agree.
It's either we have a permit that regulates signs or we don't and are applying a gray area for some signs and not others.
I mean, I know most localities have a fee for a yard sale as a means of revenue. I don't know of any locality that restricts directional signs or charges for a realtor to put a directional sign for revenue, as a revenue source. I, I
They would allow a directional sign in the right of way?
Directional sign, well, now I say they allow, again, I would be speaking out of school because I haven't checked their, their sign ordinance. But if you drive around town, and I say town, around the peninsula up to Williamsburg, you see directional signs everywhere you go.
Well, no, no doubt there's going to be some violations. I, I know at the county, you know, when I worked with the county, which didn't allow any signs in the right of way, you were always chasing the guys who were, you know, advertising free internet or, you know. I mean, the signs were there. They were in the right of way. They weren't legal, but they were there. I mean, this, this is an attempt to give us some, I mean, right now, as Danon pointed out, we have very little specificity or direction on, on how to apply our current sign ordinance. This, the, the purpose of this is to give us something that we can actually go by. You know, if it's not permissive enough, then that, that's why, that's why we bring this before the plan. And the planning commission can direct us to change a few things. You know, that's fine. But, I mean, this has been put together with, you know, a lot of thought. But, but again, thought everything. So I want to be careful about what I'm saying here.
Primarily, the reason this has come about is a result of the election signs. I mean, that's where this is all stemming from. So do we penalize everybody that wants to use a sign for three or four hours because of election signs that go out? Maybe specify that type of sign as opposed to creating a carte blanche across the platform and saying no signs are allowed.
Well, we already saw that was, that was defined to be illegal if you're going to limit a political sign. That's against the law. So that's
Then we could, you could limit the number perhaps of that can be displayed of political signs within a certain, I, I don't know. I don't know. I'm, I, I don't know. But I don't think that we should be knee jerk reacting to political signs that go up
Okay.
How frequently that they go up.
Well, they'll go up in seven weeks.
Well, seven
Well, yeah. And just to be clear, we've been working on this ordinance quite a while. Certainly the election signs, you know, is what really persuaded us more than anything else to hurry up and get the same before the planning commission. But, you know, the, the regulation of signs in the right of way have been a problem for a long, long time. It's not gone unnoticed by several of the people that complain of. So, you know, this was an attempt to address that. As Danon pointed out, we, we tried to get, all predates me, but apparently three or four years ago, we, we tried to take attack to get rid of all signs in the right of way. So, you know, clearly that wasn't what the council wanted. And when we talked to council about this ordinance, we asked a few, asked some pointed questions. That's what they were looking for. But I do want to make it clear that they, they wanted the planning commission to make a decision. So if you see anything in here, I'm not trying to persuade you, I guess is what I'm trying to say. But I'll go with whatever the majority of the planning commission feels.
And I, I really do appreciate all the, the work that you guys have put in. And I know that you've put a lot of thought in and, and trying to figure out the best way to regulate. And unfortunately, I just don't think that this goes far enough to the, the issue, the problem that a lot of people have, which is, and Danon had mentioned, well, you can still have 30 signs, bam, 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 a couple feet apart, as long as they're away from the intersection, but you still drive down and you'll see sign, sign, sign. So I
That's just the nature of the beast.
The only way to get rid of signs in the right of way is to just prohibit them altogether.
You start legislating everything.
The only way to get rid of the, the, the many signs that you get in campaign season. And even then, you'll get some on private property, which may be visible. But the only way to really get them out of the right of way is just prohibit all signs in the right of way. That is not a tack that is going to result in
I think, I think we debated, yeah.
I mean, the city council before we even started this process.
We debated at the last meeting. I, I just see, there's certainly been a lot of effort to make it a little bit more clearer than it was now. So good job, Danon, on that. The hundred, 100 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet, the concern in our discussions at the last meeting was really that, that visual safety of motorists. And if we think about signs, you know, you're wanting to distract a motorist or, or create attention to a sign. And so then, you know, I think comes back to the body is, you know, we have health and welfare responsibilities of, you know, by creating environment where people can safely travel through the intersections without the distraction, as, as difficult of it it might be for individual needs, at least we are addressing the, the safety piece. The pop up signs, I think I brought up the, you know, the sports clubs that sell donuts on a Saturday morning or the car wash kids, you know, on the, the high school on the corner of Florida. I guess that would raise to the level of what you're talking about, Danon, that it's a one time thing.
I'm not going out on a Saturday
And you're, you're not going out on a Saturday morning, which may address Libby's issue of those pop up signs of real estate where it's a, really don't have the ability to police those, shall we say, you know, um, chew signage. We're talking about a 30 day sign here. We're talking about a sign that's going to be out for 30 days. And I think at point, the, you know, the willingness of how can we be thoughtful, respect the health and welfare of the motorists. So I, I happen to think that we've, we've, we're close. We didn't address obviously space between signs. And so then when you talk about distraction, I think clutter, signage clutter is, is certainly rising to the level of distracting drivers. I don't know what the, the reasonable and fair space between signs might be. I mean, we have, we have space between signs for any of our commercial buildings. I mean, we have, you know, have fairly defined areas of, of how much space is, is signage. So I don't know that, that could be a slippery slope also for temporary 30 day signs. Other, the other piece that I had thought about with the 20 foot setback for the largest signs on Victory Boulevard, how will the future VDOT widening project impact? I, I don't know how far that, that right of way is going to
When it happens, it will impact it. I mean, you'll have, you'll have more roadway, obviously.
Right, so
And, and some of the right of way will be taken up with the roadway, many feet from the roadway. So sure, it'll, it'll have a, it'd have the effect of
Picking up this right of way, is that correct? This will become a road
Right, at least part of it, yeah. Not all of it.
As far as I know, we have not received approval from VDOT to actually, you know, put in new lanes. I think the current project that we may have approval for is to widen the emergency lane to serve as better access during something like hurricane evacuations. But we've been asking for years for them to widen Victory into something like a three lane or four lane divided, and they haven't prioritized the project. So they, that may not happen for decades into the future.
A new development that's going to be going off of here is going to be severely impacting traffic flow coming and going.
Potentially, sure. Absolutely.
With nothing in sight for widening. Nothing.
Nope. No, they may have to put a, I mean, once they get to the end of the project, they'll have to do some study to see whether it's
Have we addressed any of the 200 feet or do you like 100 feet or what? I mean, I kind of
I like the 200 feet, but for, for safety of everybody involved, I'm not opposed to reducing that to 100 feet. I, I think that 300 plus feet out is, is just too much.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with you, especially this intersection out here. It's a busy intersection at times of day.
Yeah.
And we don't, I don't want, I just, I don't want, I don't, we want people distracted by anything. There's enough trouble out there as it is.
100 feet with car spacing is really only about three cars.
Yeah.
Length. So I think 200 feet is better for safety.
Talking about distraction, I mean, now my main concern is in the intersections because you But when you talk about numbers of signs, when you get in, and I'm thinking Kind of get immune to them. Actually, they don't be Kind of ride by and they don't even see them. But in the intersections, that's, you know, that's the places we want to keep them, you know, out of. So I, I think 200, I'm thinking
Well, it's not a sign per se, but when the civic leagues in the city post the American flags and other flags along with Creek Road, where do those fall within the 200 feet? I've never measured it. I, I don't know, but I
I mean, you're talking about a government flag there. So I, I don't regulate that.
Okay.
I mean, like there were American flags out last week.
I don't think we would consider those signs.
Yeah, I don't think
Because I know in appendix D there, specifically exempted from permits and stuff.
But could we consider a limit, an exemption for our signs that would be a directional sign for less than 24 hours or something of that nature?
One day only.
One day only signs that would not require a permit that would take into account directional signs to events, be it an open house or a party or whatever the case may be.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with it if you're going to put it too close to the intersection for the same doggone reason. Well, I don't care if it's there for one day or for, for one year. If some, if it's going to distract somebody's attention coming up to that red light, it's going to distract their attention. Now, if you put it back a little bit, I could possibly, possibly think about it. But putting it at the intersection, I, I can't agree with it. You know, go talk to Russell Taylor and you can put in his property. It's only 20 feet up the sidewalk.
Could put a line in section 113, signs permitted without a permit, saying that signs that are erected for less than 24 hours
Yeah.
Do not require a permit. We could do that.
I mean, the fact that it does, I mean, technically
I could deal with that.
But you're still saying 200 feet from the intersection.
Well, actually, if, if we put in that simple language under 113 or 112, less than 24 hours, it becomes a sign that doesn't, that doesn't need a permit. Since it doesn't need a permit, it's not subject to the distance.
Oh, okay. Where, where, where are you at again now? What, what are you reading?
I'm looking at the signs permitted without a permit, six dash 113. If we put the standard in there that signs allowed for less than 24 hours don't require a permit, then it's no longer subject to the distance requirements that we have under six dash 115, because it doesn't require a permit.
I would be fine with that.
Would that be acceptable to allow one day only signs in those intersections?
Well, as I'm concerned, that's a slippery slope. You start down that slope.
An exception, you have another exception.
Are we aware of any issues that have occurred as, at the intersection as a result of these signs? I mean, we're, we're, everybody's uptight over these signs, but do we have any documentation that there have been any hazards created or any accidents as a result of this? Or any, anything specifically we can enumerate as to why we're even entertaining this, other than the fact that
Specifically Bakosan, I'm not sure I can answer that question. I can tell you that nation studies have been done about the, the, the effect of signs, I was going to use a big word there, but the effect of signs on, on traffic, you know, nationally. But as, as far as anything, it's particular to the Little Florida Victory, I, I'm, I'm not aware of any
I mean, it's unsightly. And I think we, we all agree that it can cause distraction. But I'm, I mean, most people just, they don't even pay attention to them anymore. I mean, how many people release, oh, let me look at this sign. Most people don't even look at them.
I would just point out that we're not allowing those signs there now. Probably predates
I still believe directional signs, a small directional sign should not be prohibited at an intersection. I vote for anything that
What, for the
You won't vote for it. So that's fine. I mean, everybody's right to their opinion. But I mean,
You get your 24 hours first.
I feel very strongly, if it's less than 24 hours, I don't think there should be a restriction for a, a one directional, a directional sign pointing down Little Florida Road. I just don't see
But less than 24 hours.
Less than 24 hours. Or even less than 12 hours for that matter.
You can't regulate it to just one. If you have four, five, 15 open houses down in the lower part of the city where everybody needs to turn down Little Florida Road, each realtor puts up their own directional sign.
They don't do that. If there's a sign already pointing that way, open house, I don't need to put a sign there because I might put one on Cedar Road because mine's down on Cedar Road, but whoever's going down to the next
This doesn't pertain to Cedar Road.
The point I'm making is the open house signs are typically not every realtor that's having an open house sign is going to need a directional sign. If there is one already up pointing to an open house, they're not going to throw another one there. They don't need to because it's already pointing in the direction they need. They're going to put a sign, another directional sign pointing to wherever their house may be located, which I said may be Cedar Road, and you, and you would put one on Cedar Road. But to limit that activity within the city, I, 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 I just really strongly disagree.
How do we track though? If we don't require a permit, how do we track it? How do we know it's been there 24 or five days or?
They don't have open house signs for 24. I mean, open houses are typically what? 10 to two, 12 to two, whatever. Garage sale signs.
They typically are, but
Garage sale signs. No, you go around tracking to make sure every garage sale has been paid for, has a permit on it. Do we, does anybody do that?
Again, we're complaint driven.
I did that at intersections last year.
You did it.
During the summer, yeah.
Periodically, and, and I think it's realistic to assume that we will be forced a new ordinance, rather vigorously. Might be going a little bit beyond our typical policy of complaint driven.
I will say one other thing, which is that, as I introduced this topic, this only pertains to the city right of way, which is typically four to seven feet aroundabouts from the curb, which is not that much distance. I don't know if they got a permit for those or not, but those A frame signs for, what is it, volleyball or black and white ones?
Chasing
There's one on with Creek and there's one currently off the Coast and Avenue. Those, I think, are far enough away to not be in the right of way. And those signs are not regulated by this ordinance. And as far as I know, they are mostly permitted without permits. You can have as many political signs as you want on private property. We don't permit those. Another example
Private property is a different deal.
Another example is that house that was for sale at the corner of Shipwreck Island that had three or four real estate signs up, which while I was enforcing this whole 100 foot thing, I determined those were out of the right of way. So they stayed up. So if you could stomach staying four or five feet thereabouts away from the curb, they will not be covered by this ordinance. You can have as many as you want.
Who's going to establish whether it's four feet or five feet or six, seven, eight? How, how do we define the public? I mean, we know what the I mean, we know what the public right of way is, but if I'm in violation, how do I know that it, you know, I, I put it at five feet? I'm sorry, I thought it was five feet, but you said, oh, no, it was six feet.
Yeah, probably go ahead and check.
Yeah, if this whole one, two-hundred-feet intersection thing, this is, that's the area which we would concentrate enforcement on, so we would probably look. We have information from Public Works as to what our right of ways are. We would probably go out and make sure we really do know what those are as for the rest of the city.
I would assume that if you got a permit, as it says you're supposed to, and you came to the office to get a permit, then you would get a handout that tells you where the right of way is, just as you get a handout now if in fact you do a yard sale sign. Because I've done them, and I come up there, and they give me a set of instructions that tell me just where I can put them. And I, I would assume that there would be something similar to that if I got a permitted sign.
Mr. Travis is actually right. In fact, I was just getting ready to say that that's another reason to get a permit. But, but yeah, we certainly established
The crisis is already there.
What is the timeframe for Appendix D revisions on private property? Is that going to be coming pretty quickly?
Right now, we'd like to get to it in the next year.
Next year.
In the next year, but we've got some setback a little bit. We felt like that the signage in the public right of ways, that's where we get most of our complaints. That's where most of the blowback that we get comes from is signs in the right of way. So we thought we'd address that first, and then that'll sort of give us a template, well, at least somewhat, for what we might do with Appendix.
That's strictly personal, I mean, private property. It seems to me they should be done simultaneously.
Yeah, I was
It's too much to handle, it's too much to handle simultaneously. I mean, if we did Appendix D, I mean, the appendix is about twelve or thirteen pages long. And what we discovered, at least from our perspective, and maybe you wouldn't have the same problem, but it's very hard to focus on one area when you try to do them both at one time. I mean, this is public right of ways, so throw out everything else, and we'll systematically go back and address the problem. But it was confusing even, you know, when we were talking about, I mean, to, to make the distinction between what we're actually talking about. So that's why we broke it up.
I was sitting, sitting here thinking, have a little time to discuss the fountains of the coast.
I don't, at this point, probably not.
It's got to be seven minutes, I think.
I mean, I can present that as part of the public hearing, that's fine. I mean, we always thought that the fountains was something we'd try to get to if time permitted, but we're having some really good conversation about signs in the public right of way. And so, you know, I think we ought to try to wrap it up if we can.
I have one more question then. So with the permits, is it one permit with the five-dollar fee per sign, a multiple per permit?
A multiple per permit?
Yeah.
So what, a way of limiting those large quantities? And I know that it's definitely a hurdle that they can overcome, but say, okay, per permit, that gives you two signs or three signs. And, yeah, they could come back for multiple permits, but then they'd have to pay five dollars, they'd have to do the paperwork. And it would just be a logistical way to maybe try to, you know, tighten that flow a little bit so that they're not trucking down the street with fifty signs over their shoulder, just putting them in.
Did consider something like that. We also considered some kind of like a prorated fee for each additional sign costs more money. We didn't put that in the current revision, as these were the minimum amount of changes, but we could consider that.
Now, am I mis, am I misreading this? In six sixteen, Section C, it says, except garage and yard sale signs, there's a fifty-dollar fee and there's no limit on the number.
The fifty-dollar deposit.
Deposit, deposits, well, I mean, that's, that's what you're getting at, but, you know, I, I think that, I thought we talked the last time, we did not want to go to a per sign fee on things like
That's why it's not Political events and all that, because there are so many of them.
Right. And the five dollars is, excuse me, it's for the yard sales, certainly you get two signs.
Right. And we make it so every permit for a right of way sign is five dollars. But anything that isn't a garage or yard sale sign means fifty-dollar deposit, please, as a way of getting people to clean up their piles of signs after the election's over.
I read it now, I, I didn't read it wrong, but I read it now.
Do we have a consensus on that? No.
I don't, but I'm, that's just one vote here, so.
Okay.
I think there should be a provision for temporary signs.
I still dang it want to find a section to the quantity of, quantity of spacing.
Well, you know, if you could, if you think about, I was going to say, what locality have you seen that done? I mean, everywhere I, you go during that period of time, every locality that I've driven through is the same way.
Yeah, I don't notice it as, I notice it on the
Because you live here, that's why. But if you were to drive around during that point in time, you would see the same thing everywhere you went.
That's all.
I mean, I go into Hampton on a daily basis, and believe me, they were everywhere.
About York County, do they have?
I don't travel York County as much during that period in time, but I think that this is not peculiar to the coast. And I think it's a, it's the time, it's, it's just the nature of that beast when political timing.
Well, I will say
To see us restrict everything because everybody is so bent on trying to restrict political signs that we're, we're, you know, we're, we're, we're taking the rights of everybody away because of that. And I don't think that's, that's right to the citizens.
Actually, from what I'm hearing from some members here, we're actually being too liberal with political signs because we're not placing a distance requirement from one sign to the next.
Because you can't enforce it, how would you ever even enforce something like that?
First of all, I think we would set ourselves up for several lawsuits. I mean, Andy could, could put in on that, but you can't discriminate against one candidate just because the other would beat them to the punch. And located, now, it is true, we saw the whole, and Muckler signs practically on top of each other last time, but they were certainly not any space apart, anything like what we're talking about here. I mean, they were, they were right there, and, and, you know.
I don't think we want to make ordinances that aren't enforced, I think clearly
And this, this ordinance is written, we can, we can enforce it a heck of a lot better than the one that's on the books now, which leaves us into no man's land. In fact, I've been writing permits for signs well in excess of four feet, because that's been our standard practice. So I've been fading to our practice, which is basically, as Danon pointed out earlier, Appendix D rather than Chapter Six, which is what we want to be, because that's, that's what actually governs the sign right of way. So, you know,
An Appendix D, as interpreted, says basically, you can put whatever sign you want up for thirty days so long as you have approval of someone in our office.
Yeah.
So.
But that's on private property only.
It's everywhere.
Well, we've been
Well, I thought Appendix D was strictly for private property.
Well, that's what we would like to make clear.
But it's not there yet now?
It's not clear now.
Then I don't think that we should be passing this without a simultaneous review. Appendix D?
Why not?
I mean, if, I thought that Appendix D, you said, was strictly for private property, but what you're telling me it's in there right now is not just for private property.
No, it is for private property, but it has been misapplied just because of the very confusing language in Chapter Six and then Appendix D. Leading a reasonable person, what this does, it makes it clear that if you got a sign in the right of way, this is what's going to govern it.
Is it going to be contradicted in D right now, as it stands?
Not anymore, because we're taking it away. We're taking, we're making this a standalone ordinance that applies to signs in the right of way, has nothing to do with Appendix D or private property, nothing. This all came up when I started looking at permits over a year ago and was wondering how we were doing all these temporary permits. I happened to make, I, I happened to read Chapter Six one day, and it's like, well, how are we doing this? And Danon knew something about signs, because he had been through this before. And that is the seeds of, of what we decided needed to be done. I mean, we had confusing language that was being misapplied, and we needed to get it straight. That's all this is, is an attempt to make what we already have plainer. And, and frankly, more enforceable, because the old language, it's been, been misapplied to the point that to go back now and say we're going to follow this ordinance, I think it's a little bit unfair because we've had people come in and get signs under the same regulations for years.
And while, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we revise Chapter Six, this language is more specific, and therefore, it would override the more general language in Appendix D, which would apply to all signs, even if we don't change the latter.
Yes, specificity of rules generally.
Well, what if there's conflicting language, though, that, and I haven't read Appendix D, so, bad on me, but I, I don't, I, I haven't seen the language in it, but I would want to, I would want to see the language, I would want to read Appendix D and look at
Well, if we make this change, we would apply this language to anything in the public right of way, and it would supersede Appendix D. Everything else with relation to private property, there may still be problems and issues there, but it wouldn't apply to what we're discussing right now, which is signs that are on the side of the road.
It would be on the side of the road, they'd just be on somebody's personal property.
Well, signs in the right of way.
If they're on personal property, it would be governed by Appendix D, which, as Danon
So, so what restrictions are there on private property right now, if you're going down With Creek Road? In Appendix D?
You can have as many political signs as you like.
Yep.
With no size restrictions, without a permit.
Cell signs.
Real estate signs up to twelve feet without a permit. Temporary signs. Lot of, there's a lot of room in there.
Private property, though, yep.
I appreciate all the work you all have done on it, I, I just feel like pumping the gun trying to resolve something that
It's a huge problem.
So is taking away rights of people who
Well, knew it was going to be complicated. We knew it was not going to be easy, and, but it would be good if the planning commission could give us some direction as far as the distance requirements, and, and even for the directional signs within a hundred feet, you know, if that's something that we don't it'd be good to get some sort of feedback from the planning you know, or, or five to one, or three to three, or whatever it is, just to give us some direction. That's really what I'd ask for at this point. It's obvious we're going to have to change a few things, but, you know. What are those things?
I would make a proposal right now that directional signs, temporary signs, be allowed within the hundred feet at an intersection, if they're less than twenty-four hours. That would be my recommendation.
Well, I guess, mull that over and you can propose it at the regular session, I suppose.
Yeah.
Second, we can move it, yeah? Yeah, we're late.